Anaheim remains committed to freedom of speech and we ask that speakers address the city council with civility and refrain from making personal, threatening, abusive, slanderous, or profane remarks towards any member of the council, staff, or general public. We appreciate your reflecting the spirit when you speak. The first five speakers may line up at the podium. After that, I request that speakers please refer to the projector behind me and line up at the podium as your name appears.
Welcome.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Emile Carson and I'm homeless. I'm homeless in Anaheim. I live under the Kettle River Bridge over there by the Honda Center. I haven't had much contact with the Anaheim PD because they made contact with us, they know we're not doing shady things out there. Okay, we tend our net and we try to be good neighbors even if we're not one of these neighbors. This thing with the parks and the cameras, Anaheim is, I talked to one of the officers, I believe it might have been your chief of police, and he says all your officers are camered. They all wear body cameras, which is outstanding because it keeps everybody honest and it keeps a record of what's going on. It's no more he said, she said. Okay? Saves a lot of trouble. But putting these cameras up on poles in the parks is, you know, what's next? Do we put them in people's houses? We build them in as part of the TVs? Put them up in front of yards? Why not? We have a park strip that's along there, that's public easement. We could put them in front of every house. You know, the price goes down per unit when you get a lot of them. It just, there are certain things that make people free and being watched 24/7 is not one of them. Okay? You have to allow people freedom to take and make mistakes. You have to allow them freedom to screw up. Okay? But there are consequences when they do and they deal with those consequences. But, you know, you're gonna end up with that movie with, what's his name, Tom Cruise did, Pre-Crime? You know, you're gonna take and penalize someone for something they thought about? It's, it's just, it's bad business. It's a slippery slope. Okay? It's the same thing as when you start eroding the Bill of Rights. You start having, well, we'll make an exception here, we'll make an exception there. Okay, pretty soon, there's nothing but exceptions because if you want to see somebody run with an idea, go find a lawyer. Okay? They can dream up a way to run around something. Okay, that's their job and they're good at it. And apologies to any lawyers might be present here, but you know, if you're good at your job, you're good at your job. Some of them are really outstanding, but you're running with something that's gonna really harm us. Okay? Because it's gonna take an ad, it's gonna be okay here, it's gonna be okay there, it's gonna be okay here, and pretty soon, we'll just all wear cameras. And, you know, you can take, pull the chip and see what we did today. You know, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Renee and I'm here to speak or to speak against item 21. Anaheim Police Department cannot be trusted. The chief of police employs multiple repeat offending murderers that have zero accountability. Why would any of us trust the police to have high, high-tech surveillance at our parks where we go for recreation? I personally go to Twyla Reed Park three times a week to take my son, my 11-year-old son, who is obsessed with disc golf right now. I take him three times a week to Twyla Reed Park. And yes, there are homeless individuals there and I'm sure that a lot, you've heard a lot of complaints about these homeless individuals that are there, but I'm here to tell you right now that I am there three days a week and these, and the homeless individuals that are there are very thoughtful, are very respectful, they even cheer on my son while he's playing disc golf. They go and get his, you know, they, they give him extra frisbees that they find around. You know, and I'm not here, and that's no complaint. We, we, when we're there at the park with the homeless, there is no problem. I have no problems at all. And to be under surveillance during, while we're there, having a recreational, you know, disc golfing or that by a police department that has zero accountability and known murderous officers in their department? No. No, 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 no. I don't know why you guys are deciding to entrust the chief of police to spend all this money with this, with this surveillance company. But I looked up the surveillance, the company, and they do even facial recognition. Okay, that's, this is, we're rapidly entering, these are signs of a police state. Need to understand that. Parks are for recreation. They should not be under surveillance like that. Facial recognition? Like I said, I attend Twyla Reed three days a week for recreation with my 11-year-old son. I have no problem with anybody there and I haven't. We've been going for months. The Anaheim police cannot be trusted. They need to be filmed at all times. They don't need to be feeling, filming citizens enjoying their recreational time at parks. They cannot be trusted.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is R. Joshua Collins. I'm the founder of the Facebook group, Homeless Advocates for Christ. And first, I'd just like to encourage everyone to give life to Jesus Christ, including some individuals at this council that seem to live against God's principles. There's a heaven, there's a hell. Jesus died for us. I encourage you to live for Him. You can receive eternal life and forgiveness only through Him. Now, I'm also concerned regarding the homeless issue. Still, code enforcement trucks are taking property from the homeless when they leave the property momentarily for less than 10 minutes. One homeless elderly woman actually gave me quite a story. She said that she was given a $280 ticket while with her property at Maxwell Park. Now, she was actually trying to protect her grandson, she's a grandmother age, older lady, and, and she was on the street in a sense because she was trying to make sure that he wasn't on the street also. So anyways, I'm concerned very, very much for how people are being treated that are homeless. It seems like you're criminalizing the poor. Even under the law, people can be ticketed for having camping paraphernalia, like sleeping bags, bedrolls, bedding, luggage, those types of things. So it seems like you're definitely against the poor according to the law. And regarding these cameras, are you gonna be actually filming people with bedrolls and then having the police come and ticket them? Now, there's an officer right back there in that corner that when I was in the park at Maxwell Park, he actually threatened to take my property and he knew it was my property while I was filming the police who are harassing the homeless. An officer's right there. Okay? And I have it on video. He has a black SUV and he pulls up to my bag and says, "Oh, I'm gonna take your property" because he doesn't want me filming the cops. So that's the kind of stuff that Anaheim PD does, the kind of games that they play, and the cop's right there. Can you, oh, maybe you can come up and speak about it. But I hope that you really consider changing some of these rules and laws and things like that to, to, to protect the poor. That's what you should be doing, defending the rights of the poor and then you, like the Bible says, or you're just gonna bring shame on yourself. This is socio-economic discrimination. A lot of these laws should be repealed and you shouldn't make it a crime to have a sleeping bag in a park. And I've emailed you many times and you guys don't ever respond to me. Shame on the city of Anaheim. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jennifer Rojas and I'm representing the ACLU of Southern California this evening. I'm speaking on item 21. Surveillance technology is rampant throughout Anaheim, but transparency, oversight, and accountability is the exception, not the rule. We believe three things must happen before the city approves the agreement with leveraged information systems for an overt surveillance system in Anaheim. First, we encourage the city to develop a surveillance impact, surveillance impact report that will examine the exact purpose of the surveillance technology, the impact on civil liberties and safeguards, and an analysis of fiscal costs. Second, Anaheim Police Department should provide an opportunity for the city and residents to examine a surveillance use policy. Finally, we encourage the city to facilitate broad and accessible public hearings so residents can be equal partners in surveillance decisions. This agreement leaves more questions than answers. What specific problem in Anaheim Police, what specific problem is Anaheim Police Department trying to address? How effective will surveillance be in addressing this specific concern? Finally, what impact would surveillance have on privacy, free speech, and civil rights? These are the questions we hope the council will consider tonight. Without thoroughly and publicly answering these questions, the city could face unexpected financial costs. For example, in Philadelphia, the city planned to spend $600,000 for a video surveillance program featuring 216 cameras. Instead, it ended up spending 13.9 million on the project and eventually only installed 102 functional cameras. Also, these surveillance systems are subject to costly and invasive breaches. Redlands, the city of Redlands implemented a similar surveillance system that was discredited when a computer, computer security experts demonstrated how easily they could take control, how easily the public could take control of the cameras. The subsequent encryption that Redlands instituted was extremely vulnerable. We encourage the city to postpone this decision until these important questions are answered and more public debate can be facilitated in the city. This is important, especially considering the civil liberties concerns that may be at risk. Finally, I wanted to make the comment that ultimately, safety should not be an increased investment in the police department. Rather, safety to community members should mean an increased investment in community-based services. This could look like an investment in youth programs, in education, parks and recreation, things along those lines. Surveillance technology is oftentimes contrary to this, to public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Ruth Hall. And good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. In 2010, President Jimmy Carter, paraphrasing Mahatma Gandhi, stated, "The major of a society is found in how it treats its weakest and most helpless citizens." I would like to commend Jordan Brandon, Bradman, on speaking at Patrick Kelly's May 31st rally in support of Orange County's homeless residents. It showed a real commitment to the community. I would also like to encourage each member of the city council to go to the river, meet the homeless, and speak with them as equals. What you will find is that the homeless are good, upstanding citizens like you and me. The homeless are not criminals. Most are sound mentally, or as sound as one can be when one has lost everything one has and is forced to live in squalor. The city and county have tried to criminalize homelessness. This makes it very difficult for the homeless to get jobs or housing. The arresting and ticketing of the homeless, which is unconstitutional, keeps the homeless homeless. The mere threat of ticketing the homeless for camping along the river may well constitute violations of the Americans with Disabilities Act. This is because so many of the homeless are physically, not mentally, but physically disabled. Most homeless women are domestic violence victims. Some are pregnant, rape victims. Most homeless men are veterans who fought for you in wars. Your government sent them to fight. They have lost their permanent homes through foreclosures or divorces and now are doing their best to survive in a situation created by our government and not of their own making. In the recent eviction for the Disney Marathon, the Anaheim police actually told some of the disabled residents, some paralyzed and blind or blind, to pick up their belongings and walk 30 miles to Cerritos. The homeless were offered no assistance of any kind. When the tents were between the river and the Century 25 theaters, they were invisible, but the evictions were equally cruel. The residents were told, were actually, the residents were not told where they could go. They were expected to vaporize. The items that they could not carry quickly were trashed in compactors and destroyed. A memorial for homeless who had died, many of whom were veterans, was trashed and the memorial stones were broken up and thrown in a dump truck. How would you feel if this happened to a memorial for your family members? The homeless are residents of this county just like you and me. The, the officers talk about them as if they are subhuman animals. This must stop.
Ms. Hall, thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Could I say a couple more words? Just a little bit more?
Wrap-up sentence.
Okay, I just wanted to say that when I was with the, when I was talking to the workers, I discovered that prison labor was being used to, for the destruction of the belongings. And this is something that needs to stop because it's an exploitation of forced labor requiring otherwise good individuals to commit heinous acts against the homeless. It is a disservice to the prison slave laborers, to the homeless, and to humanity itself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Proverbs 22:22 says, "Do not exploit the poor person because he is poor, and do not crush the needing court; for the Lord will plead their case and will rob those who are robbing them." And Agenda 21. You know, this ordinance that you have implemented for years have not worked at all. It's actually against our constitutional rights, the Fourth Amendment right is being infringed, their Eighth Amendment right is being infringed. The surveillance now with this, it's not an American way. Okay? That is gonna cost, it's just a waste of money put out there because people, even I don't even go to the park anymore unless I'm filming the police. Because you see this liaison team goes around with three or four code enforcement pickups and starts, you know, they, they take people's stuff away. This last ordinance was in place before, they were supposed to take this stuff, put it in storage for 90 days, and they're not doing that now. They're coming around with trash and they're putting it in the trash. I have taken people to get their, their belongings and I have seen them throwing all this in the trash. In one of my videos, as the trash was just pushing up there, what falls down? A purse, somebody's purse. I took Patty, Patsy, to get her stuff. Her prescription drugs were there. So this is, this has been a failure. Let's start doing something right. Let's start putting these people in safe zones, which I've been asking for, because you have a lot of open lots on the riverbed. There's, they're there already. All they need, all you need to put is bathrooms and showers, okay? Just to get these people, you know, out of the streets and out of, out of harm's way because they're being put into a position where now they're being all criminalized. That's not right. Because there are citizens. I met, I met Kirk, who's a, you know, he's a veteran here. And he's out there and I met a lot of people and I could bring him here one by one and you could see their stories so they could have a face because this criminalization is going on.
Mr. Robins, your time is up, sir.
People don't understand that. There's misconceptions up there about the homeless people. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, all. My name is Angel Van Stark and I am a candidate for Anaheim City Council in District 1. Today, I'm here to talk to you about a population that has no political agency. They are the foster and homeless youth. They have no political agency because if they are under the age of 18, they have no ability to vote. If they have no parents, again, their parents have no ability to vote. And therefore, they are not currently represented in the political process. And so I want to raise that issue up because at the state level, there was a legislation passed, AB 403, that the OC Register did a story earlier in January. And what, one piece of the reform that it would bring to the foster care system is that foster care youth will now have 10 days to find housing or find some sort of opportunity outside of the Orange Wood system or county system. So either they'll be moved around to different programs or they will end up on the street. And so I bring that up because if you want to see an increase of homeless youth all over our city, all over our county, you will do nothing about this. But if you want to make sure that this doesn't continue, because it's already a very high number of foster youth that end up homeless, it's roughly eight, 11 to 37 percent, according to HUD. 2.5 million children in 2013 experienced homelessness, half of them under the age of six. That's one in every 30 kids. One child in every classroom experienced homelessness, to give you a rough idea. 25 percent to 30 percent are here in the state of California. So that gives you an idea of how big of an issue it is here specifically. So I am here not only to bring up the problem, but also to bring some solutions. I have provided a couple documents that will be sent to your offices tomorrow morning to create, one, solve the political agency issue. I propose a charter amendment and I've already written down all of the, all of the legislative efforts. I apologize for the mistakes in the first paragraph. I wrote it in an hour this morning, so. But it is an effort to create a youth commission where each council member at the next meeting, at the next political cycle will be able to appoint a youth commissioner and the mayor will have an ability to appoint four members from the foster care system or who have experienced homelessness. So they have a larger political agency and they have a seat at the table to make sure that their issues are being addressed. Also, while I was looking at that amendment, or I was looking at that piece of the charter, I realized that the commission system will fall out of line in the same way that the city council has fallen, has fallen out of line until now, where it's not going to represent people according to their location. The library board will have five members and I believe that each member should be appointed by each commissioner.
Mr. Van Stark, thank you, sir. Your time is up.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
One small family kind of came out of the community and we hope to have some impact here at the council. We've worked really hard and we're trying to stay within some standards. I believe I'm gonna start with the, the cameras because this is 1984 and Orwellian and it takes away from our freedoms and this just goes right to the book. I don't think it should be there. I don't want it in my park. I don't think it should be there for the, for monitoring the homeless people. I think it's just wrong. Please, Jordan, Chris, of course, Tom and James, I think this is, this is outrageous. But, but there's a bond, a $100 million bond. And I think Chris was just talking about the benefits of the resort industry and we allowed Disney not to pay a dollar gate tax, which could have brought in a lot of money. We gave a subsidy to the hotels for $550 million or more and now the people of Anaheim are asked to pay for a $100 million bond for infrastructure. And that's infrastructure for and including the resort industry and this is something that they should be paying for? If we got the 20, if we got the money from Disney on the dollar gate tax, it would have paid for all the infrastructure. It would have paid for 50 more police officers yesterday and it would have paid for parks and it would have paid for everything else. And we need the money from the hotels too. If they're gonna build here, they have to pay for infrastructure. They can't pay for 20 years from now. If they pay for it 20 years from now, then we have to pay for it in the interim and we shouldn't have to pay for that. That's the idea. That's what you said, Chris, that, that they're supporting us, that they're helping us. And that's part of the, the infrastructure, that's what they should be paying for. I think the county, the, the council, the council majority, I'll read from my script now, the council majority has been one-sided and they've, they've been supporting the corporate interests of Disneyland and the resort. And we're trying to struggle to take back, you know, the city for the people because I think the people is what matters here. There are 350,000 of them and, and we need more from the resort and the, you've got to pass on the $100 million bond. We need more money from the resort industry to support the infrastructure. Thanks so much, you guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem, appointed personal privilege.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Robbins. You always have something very interesting to say, but that dollar tax was not going to be paid for by Disneyland. That is a misconception. It was going to be paid for by the people who actually bought a ticket and went into the, into the park. No.
Council, Councilmember Murray, you know, this wasn't, this is a point of personal...
My apologies. I don't know what bond you're referring to, but what I will say is there is no gate tax. And if there were, it would apply to every facility in the city. We extended a policy that's been in place for 20 years, but there is no dollar gate tax. We didn't exempt them from a gate tax. It doesn't exist. So I don't know where that dollar comes from because there's never even been a dollar contemplated in the city of Anaheim for any of our venues. But with that, I'm happy to get more detail on what bond you're talking about, but I don't know what you're speaking to. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Mark Richard Daniels and I am a candidate for the first district of the great city of Anaheim. Has a good ring to it, I think. Or I often refer to the first district as the Western Division. And I want to urge you wholeheartedly, absolutely, to table the item 21, the surveillance cameras, until we can look at that a little more. This seems like it's just kind of being pushed on, especially the first district. I see it's Twyla Reed, it's Maxwell, and it's Brookers Park. Now, that's an interesting combination. And I'd like to know more about it and I think a lot of people would like to know more about it. So can we pull that one off the, off the book there and look at it some more, give some more input on what the whole concept? You know, realizing that you want to watch every aspect of the homeless community and what they're doing and why are they there and get at the problem of homelessness. And I know this is such an issue that is so difficult for a city as great as Anaheim, for a county as great as the county of Orange or any county. This has to be taken to the federal level. As far as the homeless issue is a human rights issue, it is a federal issue that should be brought on and dealt with at the federal level. And because all we can do is throw pennies and nickels at something where the federal is gonna have to pick it up and run with it to, to facilitate such an issue as grand and as complex as this homeless issue. We are the greatest, richest country in the history of civilization and we can't deal with the homeless people that need our help for whatever reason, for financial reasons, for medical reasons, psychological. And we have so much wealth in this country that we can't reach out and take care of these people. And I do urge you, please, to pull off item 21 so we can look at this. And, you know, the idea of wiring for sound and surveillance and looking at, at what people are doing and stuff like that, yeah, that's definitely a 1984 thing. And it's just, you know, it's, what next? What do we do next? Are there gonna be drones wandering around the city and watching us? Maybe there are now and I don't know that. I should look up more often. So please, pull item 21. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Okay, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Tim Houchen and I'm a resident of the city of Anaheim. I'm asking you tonight that, that this council will postpone its decision on item number 21. I encourage the council to develop an impact report that further examines the cost of implementing the plan to place cameras in our parks. The report should also study the impact of a policy that not only targets homeless people specifically, but also impacts the civil liberties of all who seek to enjoy our parks. I recommend also establishing... I recommend also establishing public hearings so that residents can be equal partners in making a decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Donna Savido, candidate from District Five, and I'd like to pull item twenty-one from the consent calendar in which the police are requesting half-a-million dollars for a new surveillance system of overt, visible cameras to watch us all twenty-four-seven in three parks, Maxwell, Twyla Reed, and Brookers Park. They hope to expand the program in the future. There will also be the, there will also be the capability for the police to bark out orders and warnings at us through these things. I think this at least needs to be discussed by the council in public. It feels creepy to think of police in the command center, watching you kiss and hug your loved one, watching your kids play, watching you gather with friends for a barbecue, or just trying to be alone with a book. I'm all for public safety, and I appreciate that at least these are overt, visible cameras instead of hidden ones, but I always have a bad feeling each time this surveillance date grows. It would be nice if the goal were to prevent bad behavior, which is our main goal when we film the police, rather than spying on innocent citizens and trying to build cases against people. Two more things. This program will be paid for, at least this year, by money the APD gets from civil forfeiture funds. Is this, is the APD aware that those funds are going to drop drastically because of a civil forfeiture reform bill, SB four-four-three, recently passed in Sacramento? Are they going to be wanting money from the general fund in the future to continue the Also, this footage should be public property, not secret law enforcement property. Will the footage mysteriously disappear when it shows police wrongdoing? Remember when Caesar Cruz was killed in two thousand nine? The cameras in just that part of the Walmart parking lot were mysteriously not working. Remember when Martin Hernandez was killed in front of security cameras in two thousand twelve? That footage was mysteriously lost by the Anaheim police. And remember, we're still not allowed to see the footage from the body cameras we spent so much money on, even though in other cities with body cameras, they are allowed to. I think this measure raises so many questions that it deserves to be discussed and debated so we know where each council member stands. Thank you. And also, Jordan, I know I don't always agree on, you know, a lot of your votes, but I just wanted to thank you again for the, I throw past the Miraloma Pocket Park, and it's great. I see kids skateboarding, doing their homework and playing, and that's, you know, but we need those all over Anaheim, and I just wanted to thank you for that.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Leoncys Nettles, and I've been a resident for twenty-four years of my life.
Hold the mic a little closer to you.
Gain Junctions, military hardware, Sting technologies, and now a surveillance system that will monitor our movement. Brothers and sisters, the police state is emerging in the city of Anaheim, which are violating our civil liberties. There are four key types of violence waged against people of color, the poor and the homeless, physical, political, legal, and economic. In order to combat them, there has to be a wide variety of policy changes to address. These reforms include demilitarizing police forces, investing in community policing by creating and model training policies, restoring and expanding parts of the Voting Rights Act, reinfranchising millions of people who have voting rights taken away by felony conviction, banning prison for profit, turning back the war on drugs, restoring investment in youth job training, and providing support for working families. These changes are plausible. We, as a city, can spark change and truly be the city of kindness and non-police state. I would like for the council to sever item twenty-one of the consent calendar regarding this surveillance system. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Honorable Mayor Tate, council members, when I started this, José Moreno, one-four-nine, West James Way in beautiful District Three. Disclosure, I'm also a candidate in District Three, as disclosure. I'm here to speak about two items that I'd like to see pulled on the agenda, item number sixteen and number twenty-one. Number sixteen, I am concerned about one-point-four-million dollars of monies that can be used towards our children, going to support in enterprise that I believe, as school board member Al Jabbar said, perhaps we can get our business community, our chambers and others in the region to help us so that we can all brag about the USA volleyball team here in Orange County. As we speak, my daughter is on the varsity team for volleyball at Anaheim High School. This year, they had to purchase new uniforms because last year's uniforms were out of compliance with CIF. That was another hundred-and-fifty dollars for parents having to pay for uniforms in a school where ninety percent of the kids are on free and reduced lunch. So, I'm not, I'm not opposing in any way to USA volleyball. I do like black bragging rights. It does bring good benefits to our kids in terms of role models. I just ask that you negotiate better on our behalf and get the business community to come on board to support volleyball here in Anaheim. One-point-four-million dollars could help fund more parks. Certainly, our soccer leagues, of which I have two children in our soccer leagues, we cannot host tournaments. We cannot bring in tournaments from other leagues, which is a revenue generator for leagues to be able to lower their costs, because our parks do not have, are not enough high quality to host tournaments. Other teams won't come play in Anaheim. Same thing with our little leagues, our pony leagues. Other teams won't come play for tournaments to raise revenues because our fields are so bad. So, I can urge you and ask for the magnanimity of USA volleyball, not to see it as an attack on USA volleyball, but asking you to please help us reserve that money for our children. So, I want to thank you, Mayor Tate, for making sure to ask Mr. Burris that, yeah, that money can be used for our, for our folks. Perhaps an idea might be that, I guess they're projecting maybe four-million dollars in revenues, that maybe seventy percent, like the TOT subsidy we give to business, maybe seventy percent of that four million can be dedicated to youth sports in Anaheim at the minimum. Perhaps we can do that. Also, I am very concerned about the surveillance camera system. I'm very concerned about public safety, but also, I'm very concerned about civil liberties and protecting our civil liberties as a free society. So, I want to make sure that we balance that conversation well and with good thought before we invest half-a-million dollars in monitoring our own citizens. Lastly, Councilwoman Murray, I would urge you to read your own speech. When you accepted the position to be a council member inauguration, you're the one who brought up the gate tax. That's why we're having to vote and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on that vote in November, because you brought up, saying that the community was talking about a gate tax. You brought that up. And also, you asked earlier about a speaker who said that there's bonds. You have no idea what bonds he's talking about. They're on your agenda tonight. Four-hundred-million dollars in bonds on the agenda tonight. So, read your agenda, please. Lastly, I urge you to think about the Constitution Week. You are required now by the charter passed in February of twenty fifteen, January twenty fifteen, four votes for any ordinance or expenditure to be approved by this council.
Mr. Moreno, thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Follow your own Constitution tonight. You need four votes to do anything.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Happy evening. My name's Brian K. How's everybody doing tonight? Come on, let's get a hello. Happy evening, a little applause. I've submitted evidence of, let's see, Sergeant Darren Wyatt, Officer Michael Kuna, and City Attorney Brian Fox, and, let's see, hiring my next-door neighbor, an informant for the Anaheim Police Department to impersonate a police officer and detonate pipe bombs around my home. This didn't stop at my home. This went up and down Anaheim Boulevard, and the pipe bombs were actually attempted to be set off at your Lowe's department store. This wasn't an accident. This was on purpose. Not one of these people followed procedure. They just did what they wanted, and I've submitted evidence to you, and the procedure for you would be to report that to the FBI or to maybe have a meeting with myself, put it on the agenda, and ask these officers, including the city attorney, what in the world are they doing? You know, we need about a minute to show respect for the people who've fallen because Anaheim My next-door neighbor set off over twenty pipe bombs in a small area right next to Police Department didn't follow procedures. So, we'll go ahead and begin that now. the bedroom window. The fire department quietly went back to their offices. The police department refused to do anything and put me on a do-not-assist list. So, there's a serious problem with this police department, this city council not following procedures, and people ending up dead. I don't want to end up dead. I don't want my mother to have to go through the pain that these other families are doing. I will leave on a high note. Mayor Tom Tate, you're awfully quick with your gavel.
Brian, your time is up, sir.
I had a judge raise it clear up to here after sentencing me to life in prison, at which point I asked for the evidence. Since there was none, I was, I was let go.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is item number twenty-one. Also, Mayor Protem asked that that be removed. That is, that's the item for the security cameras at the three parks, Twyla Reed, Maxwell, and Brookers. Mayor Protem, would you like a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked for this item to be pulled because we had so many people here earlier discussing their thoughts, and most of them were very negative. They did not want this. So, I would like to have Deputy Chief Julian Harvey discuss what started this discussion and, and why we're here now with this item.
Go ahead, Julian.
Good evening, Mayor. City council members, on behalf of Chief Cazada, who is attending a command graduation as the keynote speaker, I bring forth this item. Chief Cazada is available via telephone if, if needed. The item before you requests authorization for the police department to enter into an agreement with leverage information systems for the purchase, installation, and maintenance of an overt camera surveillance system. In two thousand fourteen, one of the most senseless and devastating crimes that I've experienced in my twenty-five-year career occurred in two thousand fourteen, the murder of a nine-year-old girl across the street from Brookers Park, nine-year-old Hamana Mesa. Following that tragic and horrific crime, the Anaheim Police Department hosted a post-incident gathering to provide information, answer questions about the case, and solicit feedback. Recovery of the neighborhood following the shooting formed the genesis of this project, as the recurring theme at that meeting was park safety and specifically, park cameras. In phase one of this project, three parks in West Anaheim, Twyla Reed, Maxwell, and Brookers, will be equipped with seven to ten cameras per park, two to three of which will, will provide one-way communication via a remote speaker. To illustrate the challenges faced in patrolling the city's fifty-seven parks, please consider that in the two thousand fifteen calendar year, there were one-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-seven calls for police service in these three parks alone. The calls ranged from homicide, robbery, narcotics, assaults, to vandalism, illegal fires, and sex crimes. The earlier speakers this evening raised concerns about privacy and civil liberties. These cameras do not have facial recognition capability. There are no microphones affixed to the devices, and there is no ability to hear conversations. It cannot be overemphasized that the primary purpose of this equipment is to leverage available technology as a tool to enhance public safety. Representing a collaborative effort across departments, virtually all departments in the city, this is a crime prevention tool and a deterrent to criminal activity. We receive a significant amount of calls for service, as evidenced earlier, involving potential criminal activity in our parks, and this system is intended to allow for real-time monitoring of activity in our most accessible public places, locations which draw thousands of families and children daily. The ability to monitor in real time will facilitate the rapid deployment of officers to a specific crime in progress or problem, and provide responding officers with the most accurate and specific information possible. This capability will not only prevent many crimes from occurring, it will also prevent incidents from escalating through the surgical and timely deployment of resources. Further, this technology amounts to what is considered the best evidence, an invaluable evidentiary tool for follow-up investigation and eventual prosecution of criminal suspects. Prior to this item coming before you, substantial public outreach was conducted. Specifically, community meetings were conducted last month in August near each of the proposed park sites. The Maxwell Park neighborhood drew a standing-room-only crowd. During all three of these community meetings, not one person who attended the meetings voiced opposition to this project. On the contrary, there was overwhelming support. In addition, over the past year, the public, the police department has, in the interest of transparency, discussed this, this project repeatedly during the Public Safety Board publicly noticed meetings. These parks will be signed appropriately, outwardly advertising the cameras and their capabilities. As phase one continues, additional parks will be identified based on need, including Ponderosa Park, which is certainly a priority and had to be foregone in this first phase due to the construction, the ongoing construction there. Phase two of the, of the project includes the incorporation of other city cameras from various city facilities where independent surveillance networks are already in use. These will include, will include the city's traffic cameras. Longer term, in phase three, the public-private partnerships will be developed via memorandum of understanding between the city and private industry. An example of this would be banks throughout our city would be able to sign a memorandum of, of understanding with the, our ability to monitor their cameras. For example, if a bank robbery were to occur, we could access the camera immediately, identify potential suspects, potential suspect vehicles, and again, deploy resources with very specific information. Other examples include responding to traffic collisions or hit-and-run investigations where potential drivers are under the influence, where the, the loss of evidence rapidly is a very significant concern. Most importantly, these cameras will allow us to monitor directly incidents that are occurring in schools throughout the city. Other communities throughout the state, including Redlands, Corona, the city of Salinas, and others, have experienced marked reductions in crime where these cameras are deployed. During our community meetings, we showed four key examples, two of which involved the use of the, of the remote microphone, or a speaker, if you will. The first incident involved juveniles bringing alcohol to a park after hours, and another involved people using narcotics. These were both handled via the built-in speaker capability and resulted in the problems being eliminated without police response at all, and this freed up valuable officers for emergency response elsewhere. A final example involved a shooting at a park in the city of Salinas. The deployment of overt camera system resulted in the identification and apprehension of a suspect who otherwise could have escaped local law enforcement. Finally, many comments tonight raised concerns about the impacts of this project on our homeless population. It is important to note that homeless individuals are among the victims of the crimes I mentioned earlier occurring in our parks. This project is intended to enhance public safety for all members of the community, including our most vulnerable homeless population. And with that, I am available for any questions.
Mayor Protem, do you have some quick questions?
Okay, thank you. So, these, these might just be administrative questions, but, so, first of all, you mentioned some of the scenarios in which the cameras might be useful, but as I understand it, just about every intersection already has a camera located there. So, if there's a, if there is an incident, wouldn't it be more likely that the police or dispatchers would rely on the existing infrastructure for a bank robbery or some kind of other incident?
Using the, the traffic cameras?
Right.
The, the backbone and the infrastructure does not exist to seamlessly access those cameras in real time. So, this, that's what this would bring, bring forward. And, and those cameras are also not recorded, which is a key component of this, of this system, the ability to go back and replay an incident and identify people after the fact.
Okay. So, the cameras that we have that the city council approved more recently, those are just the ones mounted on the police cars then that are able to do the license plate recognition?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you were talking about the...
I, I was talking, yes, you are correct. I, you're, I was misunderstanding if the two systems were related, but you're probably going to explain to me that they aren't.
Correct. So, the, there's the traffic management...
This project is intended to enhance public safety for all members of the community, including our most vulnerable homeless population. And with that, I am available for any questions.
Mayor Protem, do you have some quick questions?
Okay, thank you. So these might just be administrative questions, but so first of all, you mentioned some of the scenarios in which the cameras might be useful, but as I understand it, just about every intersection already has a camera located there. So if there's an incident, wouldn't it be more likely that the police or dispatchers would rely on the existing infrastructure for a bank robbery or some kind of other incident?
Using the traffic cameras?
Right.
The backbone and the infrastructure does not exist to seamlessly access those cameras in real time. So that's what this would bring forward. And those cameras are also not recorded, which is a key component of this system, the ability to go back and replay an incident and identify people after the fact.
Okay, so the cameras that we have that the city council approved more recently, those are just the ones mounted on the police cars then that are able to do the license plate recognition?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you were talking about the...
I was talking, yes, you are correct. I was misunderstanding if the two systems were related, but you're probably going to explain to me that they aren't.
Correct. So there's the traffic management cameras, which are used to adjust the flow of traffic and change the phases of lights throughout the city. There are the cameras that our officers are all equipped with in the field, the body worn cameras for use in responding to calls for service and investigating crimes. Those cameras record activity, but it's not monitored in real time by someone in a communication center to see it in real time, if that makes sense. That's not there yet. This system will allow for that. So someone monitoring in a police facility could pull up a specific camera and see what's occurring in real time.
Okay. And then, in terms of, I think Councilwoman Murray might be able to add more details to this, but last year, there was a forum in regards to the shelter that was proposed on Kramer, and I believe Chief Cazada actually showed real video of a system in place, I think it was Riverside or maybe it was Corona. I can't recall which.
That was a park in Redlands, I believe, and that is one of the examples we showed during our community meetings where it was, again, a publicly visible camera. These are not going to be hidden. This is the overt camera, and it observed a group of people using narcotics in a park. And simply by broadcasting through the speaker to tell them that what they were doing was illegal and they needed to leave, they left. Did not require police response, but it solved the problem and freed up two officers from having to go there.
Okay. Well, I think perhaps if there was, if there is a continuation on this, I would think that showing that video might help the public more better understand what system's being proposed, and I appreciate the fact that when you did your neighborhood forums at least, you were able to show them at that time. And then just my last question in regards to the speaker feature. So since a lot of these homes, sorry, a lot of these parks have lots of homes lining around the outer perimeter, is there any possibility that you would sort of get announcement fatigue? So, you know, this device would, you know, tell people that, you know, they're being monitored, and maybe they have liquor or something else, and they're asked to leave. And since it's broadcast on a speaker, and you live close to the park, after a while, you may think, I'm not sure I really appreciate having this system in place because it keeps making announcements. Is there any, has that been explored?
Well, it has, actually, and what the residents have told us is they really want that capability. They want the quality of life issues that are occurring in the parks right next to their homes to be addressed quickly and to not have to wait for police response. And sometimes on a busy night, it could take a couple of hours for us to get there if it's a low priority quality of life issue. So they're very appreciative and look forward to that technology on the contrary. So it has been discussed. One of the key components we need to still finalize is policy relating to all of this, the use of the cameras, the monitoring of the cameras, if the cameras, where the cameras are positioned so that they do not film private areas, locations of people's backyards, that kind of thing. So there are a lot of things still yet to do in terms of policy, but as far as that concern, on the contrary, the residents have all expressed the desire that that be used to address those quality of life issues quickly.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. You mentioned that this, really, the genesis of this was the, that meeting, the community meeting at Brookhurst after the shooting of nine-year-old Imano Mesa. And I was, so I was there also, and it was a loud, let's say loud, it was a pretty uniform chorus of people there, and there's several hundred, maybe four or 500 people there, that they wanted something done to make sure that people are safe in the parks. And there's something that consistently came up where there was some sort of security And I think that, and that was the genesis. There's been some discussion about people who are homeless in parks. This is, as you said, oftentimes, maybe most of the time, possibly, victims of crime are homeless people who find themselves out of luck and fall prey to a criminal element hanging around the parks. I'm very sensitive to the arguments that we heard tonight and the civil liberties, about us violating civil liberties. And so I'm a little torn with this. It's three parks that we're doing it. There is a deterrent effect, that's the main reason, so that crime doesn't happen. There's not a, it's a public park. It's not a, I don't know if there's a large expectation of privacy in a public park, but I think there needs to be some strong policies to make sure that people's privacy isn't invaded and that this isn't the beginning of a slippery slope to Big Brother or things like that. So I think we need to have some pretty vigorous policies, the lines that we don't cross, you know, things like ability to go in somebody's back, looking at somebody's backyard, or things like that, and maybe things that I'm not thinking about.
I certainly agree. We do have other agencies and municipalities who have faced these hurdles before us, which we can rely upon, but that is certainly something we'll commit significant resources to getting right.
Yeah, so I would suggest bringing in people from the outside who, you know, civil libertarians who are concerned with this and ask for their input as we come up with these policies. And I would ask that, you know, maybe that be brought back to us at some point, what those policies are, so that the public, you know, so it's an open process and they know what, basically, they know what the policies are, how to protect people's privacy. But at a public park, I think it's a balance. And, you know, in this, we need to, you know, we have, make sure that what happened to Imano Mesa doesn't happen again or anything close to that. And I think, I think, I think there will be a deterrent effect. If not, if it doesn't work well, I would say we relook at this whole thing in maybe a year.
That's correct. This is only three parks, and so it is, for the first phase, it is a pilot in a sense, and we're certainly going to learn from these first three parks. And again, once we prove that this is successful, we will expand it to further phases, two and three, into additional parks. But this is a pilot component of the overall project.
And again, if I support this, if we come back to the council at later date, when we develop the policy, and I'd ask the police department to bring in people from the outside who can address the civil liberty, civil liberty concerns of privacy and whatnot, you know, making those policies. Or, you know, seek the advice of those.
I have a comment.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I think this is wonderful. It really is a balancing act, but this is helping the residents. They've asked for this because of what had happened a few years ago at Maxwell, and nobody wants to see a child slaughtered in that manner. So this is great, of course, to keep the cameras away from people's backyards, but you had mentioned, there's three as a pilot program, and you had mentioned Ponderosa, but you're not doing that because the park is being renovated?
Yeah, the timing of this project and the ongoing construction at Ponderosa, it just did not lend itself to including them in this phase of the project. But that is certainly a priority. It was to be one of the initial parks, but because of the constraints of the construction, we had to delay it.
Is there any chance while the construction is going on, you can talk to the neighbors and have a forum at the community center to tell them, this is, well, ask them their opinions, as you did with the other three parks, so that they know that the police department is caring about them, the neighbors, they are true citizens, and they're not being forgotten?
Certainly. That will be, that will be done at every park where we roll these cameras out prior to you. So there's a chance for question and answer, and you can relay the concerns. And to Councilmember Vanderbilt, your earlier question about the speakers, the speakers and the cameras are strategically placed to minimize the impact, the audible impact of those announcements. So that is taken into consideration when these cameras are placed and the speakers.
I pass Ponderosa Park almost every day, and the amount of people, particularly on the weekend, is astounding. It's just families, 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 and all the different parties and the balloons and the wonderful events that they're having. It's because a number of years ago, the DA at that time put gang suppression into place. The only park, it should be other places, for Ponderosa Park, where if two known gang members were associating, they would be arrested. So it has gotten the gangs out of the park, and it has put the people and the families back into the park. And if you haven't been there, go and see their wonderful community garden. They've done an incredible job, and of course, we have the two skateboard parks there, too. So it is a well-used park, and more to come on Ponderosa. Thank you.
Councilmember Vanderbilt.
Yes, I just want to piggyback on both your statements, Mr. Mayor and Mayor Protem. So insofar as outreach, so when you had the outreach meetings, were they specifically advertised for this topic, or were they part of the more general quarterly meetings that the...
No, they were specific to this project. We specifically noticed the people in the impacted neighborhoods right around the parks about, we want to talk to you about overt camera project. And so they knew what the meeting was for specifically, and it was dedicated to that topic only.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments? Have a motion? Mayor Protem, a second? Second by Councilmember Vanderbilt. Please vote.
The vote is five ayes, no nays. The motion carries.